I'd like to welcome everybody to the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting for April 24th. Can we stand for the Pledge of Independence followed by a homens of silence?
The Pledge of Independence is to the right in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Homens of silence. Alright, so are there any public concerns this evening that we'd like the town to consider in the future?
Not that much concerned. I was just wondering if there was any ways to get like a picnic table or some benches or something in the gazebo apartment? I just think it would be nice to have something to sit on. I don't understand why in a gazebo there's nothing to sit on.
Definitely something we can take a look at and see and find out if that's an option.
I do know occasionally they set up music in there, some performers will be in there, so I don't know if that would impact it.
So benches would be...
No benches around the edge, maybe?
I thought the work faces in there. There used to be benches in there, so.
There was a table of some sort in there at some point, a long time ago.
Yeah, well we'll certainly put that on the radar for...
I think it was an Eagle Scout project.
Yes. That's what, yeah, awesome. Eagle Scouts have done a lot of great things for the town, so this would be a good opportunity to talk. Okay, anything else? Alright, minutes. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes from May 15?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 15.
Pretty good.
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Minutes are approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 15.
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Start with the reports. Chief, you want to do the public safety report?
Yes. Hide back here in the...
Do that first. I know, well we might do that. Maybe we'll put you on a little bit, because we want to do the... We want to put our... We got some special guests here tonight, so we're going to do them first, because I know they're busy and I got to get to the school night. But, so we had the If I Were American test, where I go after the schools who were interested. And this year's project was on a community center, was the theme, you know, so we were fortunate enough to have one winner for our district from the Maryland Municipal League, and two semifinalists, which is pretty impressive, because there was 2,600 entries. So you guys should be really proud. So, yeah. And as we discussed, so we discussed as a council to make one of these a junior mayor for the year before. So we were, even if we didn't get a winner, we were going to review all the entries, which, thank God, because I was having a really hard time. We got like eighty-five, I think, of these things. I mean, it was a lot, so I was trying to read to these and pick them out. And I, my wife's like, "You gotta pick some." I'm like, "Well, these are good, these are pretty good, and these are still good." And I had like three different piles and I couldn't pick, so thankfully...
Someone else did.
They stepped in and took care of the problems. So next year I'll make sure we get some help, but I want to thank the two teachers. I don't know if they're here tonight, but I know...
I am. Mrs. Will can do it.
Yeah, okay, so you're Miss Olson?
I am, Miss Wilson.
Yeah, Miss Olson, me and her have been communicating a lot, so thank you for all your help with this. And then Miss Will, of course, came and we got to go down with the Lieutenant Governor, with Brayden and me, and get some pictures and all that kind of stuff. And then they got a little tour in Annapolis, which kind of worked out good. So Brayden, all of them's going to be our junior mayor for the year. We're going to figure out some other activities to have him involved. Maybe come and be at the council meeting and do some of the mayor role roles, especially on a really tense night. You know, so he can help me out and then some of the other stuff. So we're going to talk and coordinate that. But we wanted to have him tonight to come up and read their essays, both Brayden and then I think it's Jasmine. I don't know if she's here, but we have the two, Brandon Zainer, did I get it right?
Yeah.
He's one of our semifinalists too, and then Jasmine Beta. Is she here tonight? Yeah, so she's here tonight, so we're gonna, I guess we'll start with, you want to start with the runner something? You go last, or you...
Well, I wanted to ask, do you have a copy of the essays?
Yes. Yeah, we'll get them to come up. Brayden, yeah. So here we are. Look at that, look at the color drawn around. Here's one more, so.
Oh, well, they all, they have theirs.
Okay, very good.
Hey, Ian, for the mayor, the junior mayor, I think you need to have a test on the gavel.
Yeah. You can come up and sit in his seat tonight.
He's been eyeing the gavel.
He's been eyeing the gavel, alright, yeah. There you go. Your first decision could be who's going to read first, you or the semifinalist.
Brandon will go first.
The junior mayor has spoken. You want to hit the gavel? Hit the gavel. There you go.
If I were mayor, if I were mayor, I would build a community center to let citizens of all kinds have fun and spend time with others. I would include everyone in the community, including the disabled, elderly, and those who speak Spanish. I would make sure that all citizens are included and welcome. The name of my, of the community center would be Eldersburg Community Center for Everyone. My community center would be used for sporting events in areas where citizens could hang out with others to socialize. These two reasons are important, because sports keep you healthy and socializing, socializing keeps you happy. For the sport, sporting events, I would include basketball courts, swimming pools, gyms, baseball fields, soccer fields, and tracks. I would include, um... No, I would create rooms for people to socialize in. Art rooms, a movie theater, a video game room, and a sitting room. To make sure all the citizens were included in the designing of the center, I would have meetings to hear what people wanted. I would also have meetings to talk with the architects and land state architects to tell them what the community wanted. We would vote on ideas in addition to what I had in mind for the building. At the end, we would have a community meeting to review the building plans. I believe that if I were mayor and built the Eldersburg Community Center for Everyone, the citizens would use the center a lot. They would be happy and stay healthy.
I think that's a planning permission number.
Me too, but come on, that's pretty awesome. See, that's what I'm saying, when you get to read these things, I was blown away, and some of the great ideas that come from these kids, it's amazing, like, I don't know. But we're going to let Jasmine read next, but the one said, "I would have a time between 1:00 and 3:00," we're on Thursdays, where people could contact me. And I was like, "Man, this is a great idea." It was so detailed, but he was like, "For whatever reason, it was 1:00 to Thursdays and that's it." That was so cool. So Jasmine, would you like to come on up and... We'll get a picture with all of you together, we'll take a picture of them in the council, we all want to get a picture with them. These are going to be our future representatives.
If I were mayor, I would create a community center for everyone to enjoy. My community center would include people of all ages, races, disabilities, and languages. It would be a place where people could relax and have fun. My community would have classes to learn sports such as baseball, swimming, and soccer. There would be camps with activities to do. There would be a big field for kids to play on. There would also be a daycare for adults to drop their kids off. It would have many fun activities. It would be educational and a way for kids to socialize. There would also be a library, pool, and playground. It would have music and food for very low prices. I would have ramps and wheelchairs free to use anytime for the disabled. There would also be iPads when you walk in for people who speak different language. The way this would work is there would be a trans... A translation app on the device, so they can click their language, and it would translate what they said, so other people can read what they are trying to say. There would also be classes for people to learn new languages. To make sure people were included in the making of the community, I would set up suggestion boxes all over the community. Another thing I would do is have posters around with my numbers, so people can send messages with their suggestions. I would also gather the community once a month to get their suggestions in person. If I were mayor, I would create a community center everyone is happy with. Everyone would be welcome and included in everything.
Alright, now, now, the junior mayor!
If I were mayor, I would create an inclusive community center. It would be a place where groups could meet, adult and youth could play sports to stay healthy, community members could come when they need support, and families could come to have fun. As mayor, I would love to have a community art board where all people in our community were represented. Our adult and youth sports teams need fields to play on, which could be provided at our new center. Families could come and relax at our park and picnic area with an accessible playground. The health of our community is important. We could create a community garden and food pantry for everyone to use. Another service we need in our community is a meeting place. Our new center could have rooms that people could book for their needs, such as language classes, job training, scholarship meeting, and other community meetings. To make sure that all citizens were included in designing the new community center, so it would work for them, I would have a community plan, I would have community planning meetings. I would travel to all the different neighborhoods in our community to meet with the people and listen to their perspectives. Additionally, citizens could submit suggestions on the town website. I want to learn about the services they need. As the mayor, I'll pay extra attention to a few groups to make sure that they're involved in this process. Those groups would be non-white people, immigrants, children, and children and the elderly. There's a physical limitations, non-English speakers, non-Christians, and other marginalized groups. If everyone contributes their ideas, we would grow stronger as a community.
Pretty awesome, isn't it? They're fourth graders, so just to read this stuff has been quite amazing, so I just, some of these are really touching too. It was really, it's a pretty cool experience. So we have a certificate for recognition for Brayden, and then, um... I don't know if everybody wants to come up and get a picture, if you want to come up. I don't know if the council wants to see you at all. Come on up, yeah, come on up, you guys, we'll get a picture and... Take one for the deaf.
Want the white or the black?
Which do you want?
Let the junior mayor decide here. This green and white background, man?
Yes.
Come on in, gather around. That's awesome. Congratulations?
Wait, no.
Yeah.
How about one with the teacher?
Yeah! They made all this possible, so thank you so much, Miss Olson, and please thank Miss Will for us too, because without you guys, this wouldn't have happened. Thank you all very much for participating. Thank you. We hope you'll participate again next year. Yep, yeah, great, yeah. It's quite amazing. So I have all the rest, I wanted to tell them, yeah. Share these with people, yeah. So really cool stuff, but we got this little stack more, if, so I'm going to enlist council help next time to read them all, if it comes out for that, but...
Council president's first job.
Yeah, yeah. She got all the hook for this here, so. Anyway, so thank you all. Yeah, you don't have to say all.
Yeah, feel free to, there's use. Got homework to do, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. I won't be in touch, like I said, I'll contact you about some more duties for the junior mayor.
I could give you some.
Yeah. That's awesome. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Miss Olson, thanks again. Thank you, Jasmine, thank you, Brandon, thank you for coming and bringing the kids, yeah. Sorry. Now, Chief, would you like to do your... I'm sorry, here? Yeah, we'll do that next. We'll get to those before we do the council committee reports. We'll do the public safety report, no one will talk with the commission guy.
Ready for it?
Yep, good, go ahead.
That's a tough act.
I don't want to do twice, false start, won't let you get done yet.
What was amazing is each one of them talked about accessibility and inclusivity. It was just amazing, at their age, they were very impressive today. Very impressive. Alright, we're going to talk about the public safety report covering periods of May 4th through May 17th. I hope you all found the packet was acceptable. My admin assistant was off, and I had to take care of this myself, and it was my first time trying it, but hopefully you all got the packet. No. Pretty much part was in order.
Good work, Chief.
Okay, good. It's good that I practiced that, since she's going to be gone for a while. You'll be getting more of these from me in the future. But during this period, we handled the following calls. Forty-three calls for service, one citizen contact, six, actually it should be six community policing events, one court appearance, three follow-up investigations, fifteen foot patrols, two grant enforcement, three house checks, four meetings, one hundred and fifty-four patrol checks, seven SERO sign-offs, sixteen school crossing details, thirteen special assignments, one count ordinance violation, twenty-nine traffic enforcement initiatives, eighteen traffic offense other, and three vehicle maintenance, for a total, should be a total of three hundred and nineteen incidents. Entertaining any questions any of you may have about any of the listed incidents on page two or three, if you have any?
Chief, I noticed there was no Warfield frequent system.
Knock on wood.
Is that because of the diligent patrolling?
I would like to think so. We, as you know, we've been diligent in our patrols there, and still hasn't done a whole lot to prevent or deter those incidents from happening. But in this, this particular period, we did not have any.
Can I ask a question?
And you are?
Um, we know very soon after I serve, please. So I was from last weekend, and there were a lot of after parties. I heard that there was an house check. Whatever, I'm not saying any names. I wanted to know, so I have a sixteen-year-old, and I want to make sure she doesn't drink, we had to talk with her, but... Fear pressure, whatever, her not listening. So I wanted to ask you, what happens if you hear someone complaining about noise, and then you see a bunch of kids answering the door? Do you ask for the parents? What is the procedure?
Can you repeat the question too, because since you've not had the mic?
Can you just say it for me?
Shakes out.
Took the mic up a little, Chief.
So you want to know what we would do if we get a call for a large party in a house, that type of?
With underage kids.
Okay. We would certainly send an officer out to check on premises. We would ask if it was all juveniles, or it seemed like it was mostly underage kids. We'd certainly ask for the owners of the residence, the parents.
And what if the parents are not there?
Then we'd try to find out where they are and make a telephone call to them right away, to make sure that they know what's going on in their house, and that those kids that are there have permission to be there. Obviously, if there was alcohol or drugs involved, we'd have to, you know, take appropriate enforcement.
But are you, you're not allowed to go in a house, I suppose?
Uh, no, as long as there is residents of that particular house that are of age, that are old enough to be there by themselves. And assuming that we didn't see any crimes taking place in our, in our view when we came to the door. I mean, if we came to the door and saw drugs or alcohol, we would have the ability to enter then. But absent any, any signs of a crime, to which is just a loud party, again, we would try to get in touch with the homeowners to see if they are aware of what's going on, and...
So if you walk to the door and you hear partying, but there is no proof that they are drinking, underage kids are drinking alcohol, and the parents are not there? You tried to contact the parents, and then what if the parents said, "No, they're fine, I promise they don't drink"? Then there's nothing you can do?
Unless it is a situation where the loud noise has caused a disturbance to others, then we could take enforcement action on that. Disturbance of the peace, we don't have a noise ordinance per se in town, but if it was causing a disturbance, we could certainly take, take steps to rectify that. But again, each case is, we handle it on a case-by-case basis, but assuming there's residents of the home that are old enough to be there by themselves, and not children that are undetended, you know, we would, we would try to get ahold of the parents of the homeowners and try to work at that.
Would you ask the homeowner to come home if there's no adults that are...
We can ask, but...
My oldest, there was a problem, and I have four kids, so I need to make sure everything is going to go well for the other ones. So you would, would you ask the owner of the house to come home and...
We certainly could ask, but again...
You can make them.
Yeah, make them, again, as long as there's children that are old enough to be in the house by themselves. And it's not, you know, a major situation, a crime that is not occurring, it's just loud noise, we would ask them to keep it down. If we came back a second time, then we'd have to, you know, take it to the next step.
Which is?
Well, it could result in potentially charging the owners of the home if they allowed that to take place in their home, even though they weren't there. If they had knowledge that it was taking place, they were warned that we were getting complaints about loud noise at the house, and they didn't take steps to alleviate it, then they potentially could be charged later with causing a disturbance, disorderly conduct. There's a couple of things that we can, we can use.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Can I ask a question?
You can. Under thirteen, I think, has to have... Officer, can you...
It's nine. Yeah, you can be at home by yourself at the age of nine.
Thank you.
You have to be thirteen to watch anybody younger than the age of nine.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Any other questions for the chief?
I did want to make one other note. I don't know if you saw on our Facebook page, we had, the Chamber of Commerce had that ceremony, and just wanted to point it out, that two of our residents received the highest honor, which is the gold medal of valor. You may remember the incident last year where the elderly lady was cut by a family member, and the residents, the neighbors interceded in that matter, and were there until our officer arrived, Sergeant Kilgore, and for their actions, detaining the suspect and getting him to turn the knife over, they received very high honor. It was very nice to be there, see them receive such a good, high recognition, so, nice event.
And thanks, please thank Sergeant Kilgore for informing us well, so Wayne David was just in the episode.
Wayne Darling, yeah.
Pretty awesome, yeah.
They were very, very touched and honored, brought tears to his eyes to receive standing ovation, really, when they, when they read his scenario.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
Very nice.
We should have them down here for the junior mayor's here.
We can do that.
Yeah, we should, I think we should, that would be pretty nice.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so, without further ado, I think we're going to move your item up too as well, the Miller. Commissioner Howard's here, has to get you guys moving as well for the introduction of the Miller Resources for Entrepreneurs.
I can approach the bench and pass those down.
Pass back the hammer there, just in case.
During next year, right? I think it was gratuitous that the mayor waited until after the election was over to read the kids' ideas for mayor, because, you know, he didn't want to be shut up in that room.
Right. Some of them were better than mine.
I was, they were pretty slick. Yeah, I want to take the opportunity to thank you for having me here tonight. I am here with a suit, with a hat on, than I usually am here, and it's in the role that I have at Carroll Community College as coordinator of Miller, which is Resources for Entrepreneurs. We're going out and talking to all eight of the town councils over the next several months to make sure that folks are aware of the resources that are out there. They have a very heavy agenda, so I'm going to be very brief. For many years, economic development has had a small business level of activity. For a while, it was done through a program called Four Partners on One Purpose, but nobody knew who the partners were or what the purpose was, so that didn't go too well. Later on, we formed the Carroll Business Path, which was to bring resources together in a more coordinated way, and that was a step forward, but it wasn't quite all the way there. And about two years ago, the decision was made to put the entrepreneurship program altogether under Miller, under the auspices of Carroll Community College, which is fairly common. A lot of the small business development centers and entrepreneurial resources across the state, across the country, are born out of institutions of learning. The implication, I think, for the town and for the county as well, is that a lot of our economic growth, we know, comes from small business. And so there's a couple of things you probably know and a couple of things you may not, and so we just wanted to share those tonight, because we know particularly Sykesville's been extremely successful with business on Main Street and and around the town. But we also know as Warfield and other things come online, the continued growth of business activity in the community that fits well with the community is a priority. So one thing that people probably know or expect is that we help businesses get started. And I'm proud to say, I think we have businesses on every one of the main streets that came through either the Miller program or the Small Business Development Center program, which are now partnered together, co-located on Main Street and Westminster. In addition to that, we also have the ability, though, to work with existing business owners. Business owners that have been out there for however long they've been out there, that maybe need just that extra little shot in the arm, or work on a particular strategy, or something where we can bring resources to bear. And one of the efforts that we do is not only to help get started and get funding, but to really make sure that if there are resources that are needed and they're available, that those connections are made. So one of the things that's really very important as people go forward is to try to identify that you can be on Main Street, you can be serving a local community, but also you can build an excellent economic base by connecting to resources outside the area, outside the region, as a source of revenue as well. And then the last thing is, we know that as businesses, you know, you have activities and things like that to bring business here, we're also going to be looking for ways, through a program we're calling Miller in Maine, to help foster activities amongst all the downtowns, all the main streets together, that can be promoted with resources that we have to help promote those, to help foster those activities, and to make it a better business environment for small businesses. So more than anything, we just wanted to get out and talk to folks, let you know that those resources are out there if people come to you, and, you know. And the nice thing is, all the services are free. You do have a brochure with some courses at the community college, there are some small fees for those, but all the counseling and consulting services to help businesses get started and those to grow are at no charge, and they're really designed to help the economic base in the area. So we wanted to share that, appreciate your time. Questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I personally have sent somebody there, and I know they were very happy to get some of the information, and said it was very helpful, and... They're working hard now to get a lot of the other pieces together that they thought, once they kind of have all the stuff they needed. Yep, so it's helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ellen, are you a part of this program?
Yes.
Yes.
I just like guesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it works in there.
It works, right, there's a prime example. And there's a couple of brochures left over, if anybody wants, feel free to take those if you need them, so...
Right, and so, one more?
One more?
You can decide, I know there's several groups, there's also groups who come from Carroll County staff that...
Yep, so you wanna do the Hawke Ridge Stormwater Management, is that? Or...
I'm sure they would appreciate.
Yeah, would you like to do that? Or do you wanna find out all the internal funds of Sykesville by waiting all night?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Gail Engels, and I work with the Carroll County Government and the Bureau of Resource Management. And we were down here about a year ago, actually, to discuss this project with the council, and we were out in the community probably a year and a half ago when we initially started discussing the project with the homeowners. And at that point, we had not gotten engineering lined up to do any kind of work. We were just kind of working in our office to come up with some ideas on how we were gonna approach the project. So I'm gonna go over a little bit about where we're at with the project to date, and then Martin Covington, our program engineer, is here this evening, and we have a PowerPoint presentation that should only take a couple of minutes, but he's gonna go over the design of both the Hawke Ridge Farm Pond and the Shannon Run Pond as well, and where we're at with those plans. So the first thing I did wanna let you know, we did hire an engineer about a year ago. The engineering company is Carroll Anne Services, and the contract for that cost for that project at this point in time, I'm gonna move that. Spotlight, he'll talk back to you. Is approximately forty-five thousand dollars. About two years ago, the county entered into a memorandum of agreement with the towns, eight towns, municipalities within Carroll County to work on the stormwater management projects that the towns are required to meet as far as our impervious area treatment in association with the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit, which we're all involved in, the municipalities as well as Carroll County Government. And we joined in with the towns, and the county accepted the responsibility of paying for eighty percent of the costs associated with these projects. And then the town, the towns contribute twenty percent of that cost for the restoration work. Now, that doesn't mean that the town of Sykesville is responsible for twenty percent of this project. That basically means that we took the overall impervious area treatment for all the, all the towns' impervious area, all the municipalities together, and then we came up with a dollar amount, which equaled twenty percent. So the money is, is put into a pot at the beginning of the fiscal year and is used for basically all of the projects throughout the towns in, in Carroll County. So along with that, we received concept plan approval on this project by various agencies on October the 12th of 2016. We have three phases of plan approval required for a stormwater incentive control, the first being concept, the second being preliminary, which is what we're now in right now, and the third is the final plan approval. And throughout the process, we've been keeping the town involved with providing them plans, showing them what we're, the intentions are at both of those sites, and they've been on board with everything at this point as far as design goes. The next thing, we did make application for all the state and federal permits. We are required to get permits from the Maryland Department of Environment and the Army Corps of Engineer for any construction within wetlands or streams throughout the county. So those permits have been applied for, and we also held a meeting at the site with representatives from each of those organizations to briefly go over the plan when we first started a design of the plan. We are currently out with an RFP, which is a request for proposals. During our design phase, we actually took a canoe out on the Shannon Run, or the Shannon Runs Pond. We wanted to find out the depth of the sediment in that facility. We were concerned with how much sediment was in there, and we were actually gonna be excavating quite a bit deeper than what the original plan was in order to get the quantities we needed for the new design. So we knew there was a lot of sediment in that facility and that needed to come out. So our intentions are to start a sediment removal operation this summer because hopefully it'll dry out better with the, with the summertime of rain events maybe not being as bad. And we'll set up sediment control inside the facility and keep the water from coming into the areas that we're working. And the intentions are that the, we have three foot of sediment in that facility that needs, needs to come out. So we will be transporting the sediment to a facility over on Clees Mill Road, which is across from the Central Barren Industrial Park. The county owns a farm there, Delaney Farm, and that's where we will be taking the sediment from that project over, and it'll be laid out over there, spread out over that farm, and then the farmer will be able to farm the fields after we're finished depositing some of the sediments and other materials over there. So our intentions are, like I say, remove the sediment and also do some tree removal. The tree removal would be associated with the project as well. So we're not gonna be expanding beyond what the limits of the facility is. So it would be tree removal that would be in conjunction with the projects once we start anyway. So we are anticipating an early summer construction as far as that work goes. And then our intentions are to move into then the overall construction project sometime around the early fall to maybe late fall or early winter, so it would be a winter job. Hopefully, that would be less invasive to the community. I think the ground is probably frozen a lot more, and we would get a better situation with hauling materials out of that site. So the other couple of things that I did wanna talk about tonight, we are pursuing a lot of grants for that project. We actually did get funding through the Department of Natural Resources. There are Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Trust Bay Coastal Trust Fund Grant. We were awarded six hundred thousand dollars for construction of that pond through that program, along with another three million dollars for other projects throughout the county that were town-related. So each of the towns in the county have a project associated with it, and we received funding at the tune of three point nine million dollars from that grant program to cover half of each of the construction costs for all the ponds throughout the county and the municipality. So that was a real plus, and kudos to our grant folks for getting that. And then just to let you know, the construction, estimated construction cost for both of the facilities to be retrofitted is about one point two million dollars. And what we're hoping to leave everyone with, the town, with easier maintenance opportunities than what they've had in the past because of the slope situation when we're finished, and hopefully we'll leave the community with a beautiful facility that they can enjoy behind their homes or in their communities. So I'm gonna ask Martin, any, before I leave, does anyone have any questions relating to what I've talked about?
Will both projects be under construction in the winter, or is that only Shannon Run?
Both projects, we're hoping that we'll go out the bid at the same time for sure, and then we're anticipating construction to take place at the same time, if not, like, simultaneously. I don't think there'll be going on at the same time, it'll be one will get done and the other one will probably be done after that particular one, but back-to-back.
How much sediment was in Hawke Ridge Farm, uh, Hawke Ridge Farm?
We did not go into Hawke Ridge with any type of, we didn't check that out. Because it's much smaller, and we figured we could handle that with the regular construction.
And you're doing all this removal, how are you gonna get access to...
We're going to be coming down, the, the access in is Ashbrook Court, and that's where we'll be coming in to do the work at Shannon. Hawks will use the access that's given to us as far as the permanent access is. We've been using the permanent accesses for both of these facilities.
I have a good question. I'm part of the Parks and Rec, and a couple of weeks ago, we went to the sediment pond down on the, we call it the linear trail, and we removed numerous trash bags full of trash that came down and washed in. With this new construction, is there a way to prevent from trash, or it's just a, it is what it is?
Unfortunately, if, for lack of better words, the trash is what it is. And we are planning on, and I like marketing the design, but there are going to be different types of, we're going to extend the pipes, and you're not going to see the outfalls where they're currently at with Shannon. So I'll let him touch on that a little bit when he gets into the design.
One of the things, I'm on the Hawke Ridge Farm one. The trash, a lot of the trash is recycling. Because open recycle bins out for recycle day, if there's any wind, it's blurring into the storm drains, which goes into the sediment ponds. Dick Bogard here, he's gone out in his kayak with a net and has fished out a numerous amount of trash each year. So I don't know if it's something from the town, if we can look at trash cans with lids or recycled cans with lids, I know it's another expense.
Deeper can, maybe.
Yeah, because the open cans, I don't use the open can because it's been too many times I've had to come home and clean up my yard of recycling, the paper and stuff blowing out. So I don't know if it's something the town can look at from a, I mean, I see them all over the place. Because it's small cans, everybody's recycling more, and a lot of people are putting out two and three of the bins. So I don't know if that's something that could prevent some of the trash that's in the pond.
That's a good idea, I mean, that's definitely something we need to look, we've looked at it in the past. Of course, it comes down to the cost of replacing all the bins in one shot, so we've been talking about how to do it, how to manage it, because newspapers are so heavy. So if we give a thirty-five gallon can or something, and then people, people will, believe it or not, have seen it, fill them with newspapers, and then the thing weighs a hundred and fifty pounds, never fails, it seems like it's windy. Every recycling day is windy, or fifty percent of them it seems like, but that's something we gotta look into. I don't know if we can get lids for the smaller ones, maybe we can get a retrofit on that and just get the lids for the smaller ones, but...
Maybe even like the back here, I live on Main Street, we use the dumpsters back behind where the big park lot is. That's just a bunch of bins. Is there a way to be like a, a, one specific dumpster that's used for just recycling and have that marked, really? People are lazy or something?
It is, it is brutal. I mean, that's a great idea.
People are like, in the small bins anyway.
Right, it is an idea, that is an idea, we're looking at that specific location, absolutely.
Yeah, just because I'm putting stuff in, you know, the bins he's talking about.
Right.
But if there's a dumpster that prevents any of my stuff from blowing out, I'm gonna put a dumpster.
And thank you so much for getting these, the grants. You can, this partnership has been fantastic for the towns and the county because you can obviously see the cost of these projects, and that's why we entered into this arrangement, because it would've been impossible to try to do something. But kudos to you guys for getting those grants to help it out, thank you so much for that, that is amazing.
Yeah, one more thing, I've just, I've been dealing with Janet Emira.
Yes.
She's wonderful. She's very responsive to all of our requests or all of our questions. She's more than willing to come out and walk with us to property. Because I had some concerns about trees, full-grown trees that are on the edge of the project, that prior administration here gave us permission to let the trees grow, and they weren't gonna, but then in the original design, they were gonna cut all the trees down. So, you know, we have, you know, trees that are, you know, fifteen, twenty years old.
Yeah, hardwoods. We'd like to have those stayed.
Right. I'm well aware of your area where you're referring to, and Janet is a huge asset to the office.
I mean, they're very responsive, they came out, they sent a guy with the GPS and marked all of the, the Lelands, the hardwood trees, and then I saw them on the next concept plant.
Right.
So, I mean, we're trying to be environmental, but then we're gonna cut down trees to be environmental.
Right, understood, trust me. The, the one thing I will mention, that when we're ready to start the project, and certainly we'll welcome any other meeting that you want us to attend, but the preliminary plan, we're pretty much at the design that we're gonna be at when we get to the final. I mean, we really beat it to death during the concept plan stage, and then when we get to the preliminary, we're pretty much a couple of months from getting ready to put it out to bid. So unless there is a need for us to come down, another meeting to attend for the final, pretty much what we're discussing here tonight is what the outcome of the project's gonna be. So the other thing is, when we're ready to go to construction, Janet normally sends out a man smellin', a card to everyone in the community to let you know who the contractor is and our contact information, if you have any concerns whatsoever. We all have an inspector there on a daily basis, looking at what's going on in the site, obviously working with our contractor, but we're also there for you guys and the community. If you need anything, if you have any problems whatsoever during construction, Janet will put the number on there, normally it's hers, to give her a call, and we'll send someone down right away to address your concerns. But like, we've talked to Dawn about it in meetings, and we've, the main reason why we had the community meeting before we started, we wanna make sure you know who the faces are that are doing this, so that when it's time that the construction starts, you know who you need to call and who you're talking to. We want this project to be a success, and we pride ourselves on not having a lot of calls into the office or upstairs to commissioners or to the council complaining about our efforts. So our goal is to make you guys happy when we leave, and if you're not happy, then we're not happy, so just keep that in mind. Today, I asked Martin to come up and talk a little bit about the design.
One thing, Gail, the mayor mentioned that this is their joint permit with all the municipalities, and there's gonna be a tour, so we can see the different projects. The tour here in Sykesville, that project is June sixth, and the, from one to two-thirty, I think, is slated. So if anybody's around during that day and wants to join the tour of the site, they'd be welcome to join us.
We'll be rolling in out there around the pond areas around, like Dawn said, one-thirty, and we'll have engineers and staff there to discuss the project as well. You're probably gonna get the nuts and bolts of what we're gonna talk about out there, but if any of the residents that live out there that were unable to attend tonight, talk to you about it and say they wish they could attend, that would be an opportunity for them to hear basically what you're hearing here this evening.
As well as, this is being recorded, so the, this will be, this video will be available. Which site do you think we'll start at first in case people join us in the field?
I would say probably Hawks, we'll just plan on starting in Hawks, it'll be easy. And then we'll move to Shannon.
And the timeframe again, because you said one-thirty.
One-thirty. One-thirty, and then we'll finish up at both of them, so it'll be pretty quick, one-thirty, one-forty-five at Shannon, and then we're gonna roll over to Mount Erie. We probably have about seven stops throughout the day in different town projects, so... Okay, and if anyone has a question, I'm gonna have Martin talk about the design. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anybody actually really wants to get really, I'm an engineer, I love this stuff, okay? So if anybody wants to get really into the weeds, I've got a whole set of plans here. If you really wanna talk, they can get down to like, serious stuff. But let's see, which, which slide do you have up here? Wow, okay. So this is the drainage area and the whole thing, it's showing, here's Shannon, god, I should've brought the pointer. Here's Shannon right here, and Hawk is right here. It's a heavily built area today. Green area here is of course all wooded area in between, rest of it's all residential. This is, this is Hawk, the one we just first talked about. It's gonna be designed with deep pools and a shallow marsh area, sort of a channel in the bottom. All of our deep pools, one of the things that's different about the way they were designed before and the way we do it now, all of our deep pools have a reverse grade drain, which, it's in here. What that means essentially is, we don't take water off the top or the bottom of the pools. When I started this, when I had black hair, we used to take water off the top always, that's the way all these facilities were. The top water trickled over, it's the hottest possible water, right, it's the water on the surface, sometimes the hottest possible water. You collect trash, the trash washes over, all these other things happen. What we do now is, we take a grade, a pipe at an angle, a small pipe at an angle that's set to just pass the base flow, set it up usually a foot off the bottom, sometimes two, with its own screen, its own head wall, come back at an angle like this, where it goes into the riser, the water will stand to that point. The water's being pushed through from the bottom by the weight of the water above it. So that becomes the control. So it's very much like, well, I should compare it to this. It, what's that thing? Oh, yes, exactly, and it works, it works like a side drain. Or that's how a septic system works, same way. You, you draw out of the middle, which is the cleanest possible stuff, only this, in this case, it's good water, clean water, and it's gonna draw the stuff out of the middle, let the sediments go to the bottom, keep the floaters on the top, pull the coldest water possible out, that's why we always suck it, both of these are set up to go like that. If you flip to the next slide, all right, this is the big pond, this is Shannon. Shannon's a large dam. Concrete plate through it, thank God. Could, I should've said something else. Yeah, we had to replace, okay. This, fortunately for us and for you guys, for all of us, this, this pipe through here, this concrete, it needs some work, but it's a concrete pipe. Metal pipes in this area, twenty, twenty-five years, they're gone, right? So a lot of our jobs, we'll see a new pipe, new riser, everything in there is because the pipe's collapsing. It's corroded, it's gotta get out. This one has a good pipe, needs a little bit of work, but it's a good concrete pipe. Riser here, somebody plugged some of it at some point and passed, I don't know who did that. concrete pipe. Riser here, uh, somebody plugged some of it at some point and passed, I don't know who did that exactly, but we unplugged it, and it's working sort of like it's supposed to. We're gonna go back and install a, again, reverse grade drain on that, pull the water closer to the bottom, the coldest possible available water. Um, Gail was talking about three feet of sediment, right, in this whole big pond. Well, a large portion of that sediment was, was created by these pipe, where these outfalls were. There was an outfall here, 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 and a huge outfall right here. You can see that there's large ditches that run down into the stream here. See, there's a ditch here that's been filled in as part of the project. There's one over here being filled in, and there's one here. What happened is, the pipes were turned loose at the top of the hill, and it, it was a good theory, the theory was that water would spread out, you know, and we'd go down the hill, it was a sheet, and there wouldn't be any problem. That's one of those things in life, it's like, um, it's like trying to make gold out of lead or something. Everybody has that idea, you know? But it doesn't work. And what happened instead is the water re-concentrated and cut ditches, and some of those ditches, you can walk in and see them if you want to, they're multiple times my height. And some of them are wide enough, you drive a truck down through them. And all that stuff is in the bottom of the pond. So, we're gonna do what we do now, and we're gonna work with the physics of the situation. We're bringing the pipes down to the pond and discharging them below the water surface. So all the energy that's created, the idea of course is to dissipate the energy. So the energy is dissipated by hitting the water that's there. Every time we've done that, everything's fine. There's never erosion after that, because you're letting the water swirl, you're letting all the energy go as you convert. I include all that physics too, I'll tell you. You convert from turbine flow to lander flow and all that stuff. Okay, anyway, um, that's how what we're doing, we're gonna correct all that permanently. That will not happen again. That's why the pipes are all extended there, down into the water. And they're gonna, they're gonna be at, below the water surface where they come in. Uh, what else is there to say of any real interest? Oh, well, any questions? Anybody wanted to ask, they come out, the technical stuff, how it was designed, why it was did the way it was?
Can you talk about the grade going down on both, uh?
Oh, um, yes. We flattened all these out. They are, I forgot now. Hold on, three to ones or four to ones? Yeah, I didn't have to open the big sheet to get my magnifying glass out, my eyes aren't.
There are at least a three to one.
There are at least a three to one, there might be four to one. We tried, we tried to hit four to ones wherever we possibly can. Four to one slope is easy to mow with your lawnmower. A three to one slope doesn't scare you too bad, right? When you've got a two to one slope, it's pretty, it's pretty scary. And a lot of these ponds had two to one slopes. There are at least three to ones, wherever we could, we did four to ones. You know, can, can you read that thing at that, at that scale? I have to go to the plants to pull that out. But they will be, they'll be fine. They're gonna be easier to walk down to, and in fact, we have graded in here. I usually bring a pointer with me. See this wide bench right here? See this right here? Is there, you're, see the contours, how they're spaced, this is, they're widely spaced here? Then you have this wide bench, and then it falls off steeply. See that? This is where the water line is, the water line is right here. So you're gonna have this four to one slope. I, I'll tell you if it's not four to one. Go with the assumption it's four to one, I'm sure it is. It's four to one to here, then you have this long bench where you're barely dropping down. Fifteen or twenty feet. And by the time you get out that far, you've got water up to your knee. That's to give people plenty of time to realize they're in the water. Okay? Not really, you know, I mean, now four to one slope, you should go stop yourself, okay? But if you step in here inadvertently, you've got, you know, from here to the back wall, to come to a stop before you come to the, before you actually really drop into the water. Um, the other thing is, where these head walls are, of course, it turns back here because the water's coming out through there. They tend to be great places for fish. The places we've done this, I found out, where these walls discharge, the water discharges underwater like that, the fish seem to really like those spots. I don't know if we like this one, but, um, let's see. Slopes, that's the, we call this safety grade here, around the bottom, but it's just below the water level.
Martin, you know off the top of your head how deep the water elevation's gonna be? Is it like eight feet or?
Yeah, let's, uh, it's, uh, let's see, the deepest, two, four, six, and then another foot, foot and a half, seven feet or so at the, at the deepest point, which is deeper than it is today.
Yes, sir. Is there any chance of getting, um, like DNR, something to put fish in it?
We can contact them, we've done that in the past, yeah, we're proud of that.
I mean, we, back in Hawke Creek, they've actually come or from Carnival Goldfish. We had a gold bottom in the bottom of the pond, and it's a cove, and, I mean, there's a lot of wildlife that's in this pond.
I've never seen one of these ponds that didn't get re-vet shaped, but it didn't get re-populated with fish. I think people throw fish into them is what happens. I mean, my children's in the cove, but I think fishermen throw fish into them too.
Swordfish didn't.
Yeah, maybe.
How deep is the ponds at Hawke Creek?
Let me get, go on back here.
I should, can you flip back to Hawke?
Alright, I should have brought the thing.
Yeah, there's not much space on Hawke Creek, so how do you get a grade? You're gonna have to go into the yards to get a grade.
Well, not much, okay?
Our intentions are not to grade on anybody's yard. And if we have to go in the yard, we'll notify homeowners prior to, to get license agreements done up. But the, you see the dash line around the perimeter, that is the parcel line. And if you see the contour lines, the proposed is not outside those areas. So we are not anticipating going on anybody's property.
Well, with that being said, because we're, I mean, we were out there with Janet and one, I believe is an engineer.
Chris Hahn?
That sounds right. Um, one of the concerns is, there's not a lot to grade that's already there to get that slope down there. Or are you gonna be bringing filter in to set, to get that slope? Because, like I said, when we were out there and looking with him, he's like, you're right, there isn't. There's really not a lot to be able to dig to slope that. So I didn't know if we're bringing, I mean, I don't care whether it's filter or not, it's not.
We're working pretty much within the perimeter of the existing pond and working in, and part of what we're doing is we're adding more storage down below. We've looked at this culler and made sure that reducing this total storage pond, there wasn't a big culler gap, and it doesn't, the culler's still adequate. But we are working down pretty much from what's there. We were trying not to get here. In fact, we didn't, the question you asked us about these trees, you see them right here?
Right.
There's the trees you're talking about, right in here. And we tried very hard, we went back and tried very hard to keep the grading behind those trees, which I appreciate.
And the other thing, like Martin said, the amount of storage in that facility is not what it was when it was built. So that can reduce the size of that facility because of.
So the need isn't there as much.
Right. And I know you guys, I don't know how you thought about this, but our ultimate goal was to close it up altogether and push everything down the road, just because it was, you know, it'd be a lack of, they would have to maintain two facilities, and we would have one, but we couldn't do that because of the pipe under the road and the tombs drains of that pipe.
And it's, and it's, right now, you can't maintain it. The only way to maintain it is with special equipment.
Right.
Well, yeah, three to one is the absolute steepest that you can run regular lawn. And four to one, and even that is scary. When you get that to a four to one, a regular lawn tractor can be used, right? So we strive for that, because the, the better we make them, and you've talked about Janet, Janet and Gail have, they're using private contractors a lot and mowing, and the better we make them, the easier they are to mow, the cheaper the prices they get, because they put it out as competitive. It's, and I'm shocked every time they tell me what they're getting mowed for. Because when we make them easy to do with easy access and easy wide open mowing, these guys, they really want those jobs. Instead of it being a job they didn't want to do, they really want it because it's mechanical.
And you make it easy, the homeowners are gonna take care of them.
Well, that's even better. You didn't get me saying that, but, okay. Um, um, so what else is there to say?
So how deep do you think the pond is?
Oh, this is not, not anything like other, I'm gonna go back here and try, I'm trying to remember. That's the edge right there. In the center here, I'm thinking that's two, I'm thinking that's like three feet, three to four feet in, in, on this one. The other one's much deeper.
Right.
Right? Now, the other, the other reason we couldn't drop this altogether, you guys actually right, the culler was part of it, we had to work, make the culler still, still do what its job is. The other thing is, it goes back into the creek here. And so one of the things we figured out, since I got in this business so long ago, um, what really controls the, the activity of the stream is the, the smaller storms. When I was started this, we used to think that the big storms control what happens to the stream banks and erosion. It's not. It's something between the one year and the two year storm that controls the condition of the banks, how much they erode. And once it gets out of the banks, it then slows down, actually. It's that one where it's just full, right, before it goes over, that's the maximum stress on streams. If we took too much out of here, we were gonna make the stream unstable all the way down to the next pond. Now, the next pond will be alright, but between here and there, we go back to a road in the banks again, and we really don't want to fill the next pond up with sediment. And once we redo it and do all this work, we want it to be that way for a long time. I don't want to hear you talk about it again, right? Um.
I understand.
Sorry, yes, sir.
I wasn't familiar with the location of these as well.
Yes, sir.
Your first slide had a, it seemed to have shot. I was wanting to get you pointed out relative to, uh, thirty-two or Norris or Obrecht, I think, but, um.
So how far back do we have?
We would have to get the map out.
So it's Ashford Court, Calarama Road, Harlem Lane right up here. We have, uh, Caret Caret Fort coming down here.
Is O, is it right?
Is Harlem?
Obrecht is right up here.
Is that in a section of Norris and Calarama in that people?
Calarama's in that area for sure.
Harlem, Calarama coming down this way is Dominique Court, uh, Brandonburg.
So yeah, Dominique comes off.
Here's Jennifer right down here, Jennifer Way.
If you continue out Calarama, you come to a spot, you come to a low spot, and there's a culler in the road right there. And.
Basketball court.
Right. Hawk Ridge Pond is to the right or upstream, and Shannon is to your left or downstream. If you kind of, if you got out, went up the stream or down the stream walking, there's a path actually along, along your own, but just before you get there, there's a path, there's a park path.
And take the linear trail from Calarama, turn right, you'll walk into Hawk Ridge, you'll turn left, you'll go down to Shannon.
Bingo. And it really is a nice trail, it is, it's a really nice trail. Um, did I bore everybody?
No, you did just, just enough. It was perfect.
Okay. Alright, I got some questions for you before you leave there.
Sir?
Um, okay, I'll throw a wall out for you.
Should I write them down here or?
No, you're not. Okay. Um, the piping we got going in, coming out of the culdevers, are they gonna be?
Excuse me, sir, do you wanna come up to that thing, microphone? It's, I guess that they can hear him, so it's on TV, people will hear it if you wanna, then you won't have to read them back, I mean, if you don't mind.
Sure.
That way everybody, we can, it could film, and then everybody can share any answers with you.
So what you got coming out of the culdevers at the top, are they going to go right on past the culdevers, or are they coming right out of the streets and going straight down?
Oh, okay, very good question. The existing pipes come right down from the stream, and then they were just let loose here, and they went down, then the dirt water ran down the hill and was cut, ditched down the hill. Let me walk over and do this on screens, everybody else can see it. So, can we go back to? No, I'm, I'll use this one as example, because this is the one that's easiest to see. So the pipe let loose right here, and in fact, they had a little water quality facility that's supposed to make the water stop and spread. Um, the key word being supposed to, right? So, the water, of course, re-concentrated and went right down the hill and cut a big ditch. So we're not adding to the, we're leaving the pipe alone as it comes out of the road. All we're doing is going to the end of it and putting a manhole there where there was an intersection, let it loose before. And then we're just bringing it the rest of the way down to the pond.
Will you be cutting into the access road that goes down into the back?
Oh, okay, okay. Very good question. The access road is right here, right? And we are indeed going to put the manhole in the access road on that particular case. This is gonna go into the access road right here and then come down and discharge. The access road is right there, okay? Point being that by putting this here at least, if we ever have to go into that manhole, it'll be in the road.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, um, the sediment that you're pulling out?
Yes.
Going out that access road also?
It's a little bit.
Okay. Um, that happens to be my driveway?
The access road?
Yeah.
Oh, you're the house at the very end?
Yeah, okay. So I do have some concerns with that. Is that, is the driveway gonna be repaired once we get all the heavy trucks out, or?
Is your driveway part of the access road?
Yeah, yeah.
So you actually access your?
Yeah, I go in and out the access road to get.
The first, a hundred feet or so.
Well, if we tear it up, we'll definitely repave it, yes. I didn't realize it was, to be honest with you, I didn't realize it was a project.
Yeah, it's a flag lot, and part of the flag lot is my driveway that I was in there. Okay. And tree removal, is there any more trees than what you've already cut, being removed out of there?
Probably yes. I'm gonna say yes, because originally when I talked about the sediment coming out, I think a lot on that hillside goes, I don't know how much they took out on that hillside. The one up, where on your face? Okay. It would be taken back basically to the parcel line, Ray Martin is pointing, the clearing. And then you can see some areas that don't have revised or proposed grades, they would not be cleared.
Okay, so the, the trees that are from the pond up will be cleared?
In certain areas, right?
Right.
If you look at your.
Where, those are all scrubs, they were actually buried twenty years ago and moved over, so that's, that's not a good deal. Um, sediment coming out, is there, are they gonna fill all the holes, the, the washouts that are in there now?
Yes.
Okay. Good, that's all I have, thank you.
Sure. Sir, could you do me a favor? Could we get your name?
Sure, if you want. I'll even give you my phone, I am.
It's right down here.
Really, it's great, good questions. Um, anything else? I, oh, I said at the end of the row behind everybody, this is fun to talk about this.
Well, one other thing I do wanna mention, in construction, I'm sure everybody's thinking, how long is this project gonna take? So normally from start to finish, barring no bad weather or where we pull off because of snow or whatever, the projects usually last five to six months. And, um, like I say, we try to be as non, hopefully you won't know that we're there a whole lot, but once the contractor comes in, he stays in. He doesn't pull out, he doesn't go to another job, he doesn't abandon the site. Um, we like to keep them moving, we keep studying progress reports coming from them and meeting with them. So, and they've been very receptive to how we like to see things done, as far as, you know, we, we let them know that we're dealing with homeowners, surrounding facilities, and, and we want them in and out as soon as possible. So once they come, they stay, they get it done, and they leave. Um, that's kinda how we've worked all the projects that we've been involved with so far. So, uh, the intention there would be done in five to six months.
One other thing, if they could identify their trucks or identify themselves when they come in, because I've had a lot of them going in the last week, um, and they're, they're not dropping the chain, they're going around the chain, and we've had problems in the past with people dumping back there, and I don't wanna feel responsible for it, but I don't like to see them all get dumped back there. And we've had people driving back there. Um, so there is a chain on the gate, it's gonna be lifted very easily. Uh, if they could just either identify themselves, because we've had people coming in and out.
And then it runs itself to jerk place?
No, no, just on their trucks, that's what I'm gonna do. So, because I, I sit there at the end of my driveway and I see all the trucks going up and down my driveway, it's kinda nice to know if they're at least part of the landscaping group, or if there's, uh, if it's a bunch of people going back to that pond and goof off. So, because I've seen people coming in late at nights and.
Well, that would be us.
Okay, so.
Um, the regular hours, working hours would be our folks. Uh, you're gonna see county IDs obviously on our trucks, all of our trucks, and normally everybody that we've worked with should have their decals on their vehicles.
Trucks today, trucks back there today.
Were there county trucks in there?
I don't think so.
We're, maybe not even. Well, I'll tell you who could have been there today, would be the ones that have the RFP, looking at the site to take a look at, to see what they're gonna be doing as far as construction.
Yeah, it's possible. There was probably about five or six trucks parked there Friday.
That was, we had a pre, pre-cemital meeting out there on the site.
One of the same trucks was down there today.
Okay, there was a bunch of people down there today.
Okay, well, I'm gonna venture to say that they, those were the contractors that we sent the RFP to, because they're doing Wednesday, I think. So they're probably getting their bids lined up and that sort of thing.
One of the things that Gail has done, so she's been running that, is, is one of the technical staff is there every day. When we have contractors working, somebody from our office is there to, just to check on what they're doing, make sure everything's checked off, what they've accomplished, look at, make sure it's all been done correctly, and to answer questions, so we don't let people get way off, and have to bring them back in. And that also helps with people having things happen, because there's somebody, one of us walk around with one of these, uh, on site. And that also helps with people having things happen, because there's somebody, one of us walk around with one of these on-site every day.
Yeah, the only thing I have is, I know you set approximate start date. Five to six months from then, since I backed up to Hawk Bridge, do you have an approximate start time?
Or is it? Or is it?
No, no. Okay, it's a contractor. You're usually within a year of the completion.
I'm going to say we'll be starting this job sometime in November, December.
Because I haven't been maintaining behind the fence, which originally was going to be this spring was the original proposed kickoff. So I haven't been maintaining it behind that, behind the fence. Now, there is not going to be any fence going around this truck. There's no.
That's actually, does it stay up for a while?
Right. Not only that, but they say, this is what our attorney says, that people tend to want to climb a fence, kids, because they're curious more than they would want to walk across an area without a fence. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But it sounds good for them, right?
You'll find out in the first lawsuit, right?
No, the town will. But I don't think we have that problem.
You have 15 feet to realize you're in water.
If you want to work a day in my job, does that cause a matter?
Doug, you don't want to work a day in your job.
That's, that's exactly why I said you were going to.
Yeah, yes.
I have a quick question. I do. I know that there's a lot of bob life in that area, and this isn't the first time that you've done a project like this. So with construction, it kind of tends to push the deer out, because they don't want to be around that. Have you noticed that they come back after you're done?
Oh, absolutely. We, we have a picture in the office that's funny, because that question gets brought up a lot. And one of our inspectors were out one day, and they actually were running bulldozers on another side of the site, and they took a picture of a deer standing right along the perimeter, just grazing. And, you know, I mean, they're so used to all the noises and stuff, they definitely will come back. Now, whether they'll be there during the construction like that one was, I don't know, but we've seen them come back.
They won't leave. I've got the grass and have to push them out of the way.
Yeah, they come in my backyard too, and yeah. So I, I know that they don't like all that noise. I just wasn't sure with your experience if they come back.
They don't mind road noise. They're on the side of the road, so.
Does she probably do it with the doorway back on that? You probably sell that out here.
So there is a sign-in sheet that went around. I just want to make sure it's gone all the way around for everybody to sign.
Will this be up on our website for people that work here?
Uh, sure.
Can I have a copy of the?
Yes, wait, can we?
Um.
Maybe we could set that up with the, uh, staff report.
It's the gift. It's still thinking, oh. Yeah, you're right. It works for you, of course. It's just going to cool down?
Yeah, that's cool. Cool, literally.
Okay. Martin, Gail, thank you again so much for all your work on this. Uh, thank you for the presentation tonight. It's very helpful, and we appreciate the partnership so much.
Council committee board.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if we're going to get to those yet. First, because I think, do you want to do the consent for the other ideas here? Or do the committee reports first for the, for other issues?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to request that we take the, uh, first of the designation of Miller Avenue, call it, down to Maple Avenue.
Right, exactly, because I think the structure here is, there was four of us here. Yeah, yep. Okay, five. All right, yeah, I thought we would maybe handle that first, so you guys didn't have to, appreciate your patience with everything. So then, I want to remember that's in the consent. All right, so discussions. This is for the designation of Miller Avenue, College Avenue, and Maple Avenue as no parking. So after some complaints, these three streets were designated as no parking during the Art and Wine Festival. There was one spot where a sign wasn't placed and cars parked along there anyway. So during the first farmer's market, cars again parked along these streets, and they were not designated as no parking. So this designation would be permanent and would require signs to be placed in the yards. The homeowners were notified via that and invited to this meeting. So here you are. So would you, does anybody want to come up and, or yeah, did you want to come up first?
A question. So are we looking at making no parking year-round on all three streets? Are we talking about doing no parking just on Sundays during the farmer's market?
I particularly do want to park on my street anytime.
Chief, did you have any comments on it?
That would be my recommendation. Would be year-round, year-round. I mean, if we determine that there should be no parking there during an event, for the very same reason, very same reasons, there should be no parking there at any time, because of the characteristics of the road and the lack of emergency access, so.
Well, there's a much higher volume of traffic on those roads during events than non-events. Non-events, there may be five cars parked on Miller or Maple at any time. And part of that reason.
Coming up, yeah. Coming up, because you're on the, we want to get you on the microphone.
Is the lack of driveway space on some of the properties. To make it entirely no parking is going to put a hardship on some of the people. And it seems to me, if instead of making it permanent no parking, if you made it residential parking only with decals or placards for your windshield, and then posted permit parking only, I think that would solve your problem. The police are going to monitor that area, whether it's permit or no parking anyway. And if the codes are in violation, they can be ticketed and pay the fines. To make it permanent no parking, you're impacting a neighborhood, quiet neighborhood, that occasionally may, that's free access and that parking access. So it's something considered.
Which street do you want?
Miller.
I'd like to speak for Maple.
Go on up. Yep, yes, sir.
All right. I suppose I'm the overswim here and my roof rocks pretty. I'm the house owner.
I've got a puppy for it.
Actually, I was the last member, I remember the temperance in Sykesville. We kept booze out until somebody come, new people come in here and put booze in Sykesville. Never let us hold down. I live near, my wife's born and raised on Maple Avenue. We always have our family out there at Thanksgiving and birthdays, so there's still, and around. And we have our family. We park off the side on the grass a little bit. And there's no problem getting emergency vehicles through. There's never have been. I've been there many years, bred here in Sykesville, so I've been there all my life. We've never had any problems, except when you had the wine festival. Might renew that temperature. I don't know. But anyway, you had the wine festival and a few other festivals there. I think the idea he had is pretty good for our families. We need to have our families home with us, and that's the only way we can park. I know we're from East Sykesville, which is different from Hawk Bridge. Now, everybody's Hawk Bridge. But we're East Sykesville. We've been up there many, many years. Now, I can understand Miller. I don't know how that is down there, but on Maple Avenue, we don't need permanent parking. And that's where I stand, my wife and I. And because it would deter for our children and visitors coming around. We don't have the driveways for them to park. So I think they need to park on the side. I had no problems with, with parking up on Maple. There's few might have problems down the ends, but we don't have any problems. And it did work when you put a temporary up there, but it's going to put you guys to work. So maybe that's one solution we can have. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I used to be on this council. I can remember when Hapken used to meet us down at the barbershop down there. We settled everything, because mom had a five-minute meeting too.
We're quite envious, sir.
That was going, everybody trusted her by this.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Yeah, we were letting it cool down, I think, because I don't know if we can just turn it out, but does it cool down a little bit?
We're just looking for Martin's keys.
There you go, powering down.
Anybody see an extra set of keys?
We'll get them now, keys.
Is that next to the attractive there?
No, that's mine.
They're probably wrapped up in, they're probably wrapped up in those plans, Martin.
That's very positive.
I have done this three times, powering down, press power to confirm. I did that three times.
It's going to come back, though.
I know.
Anyway, any other comments, sir? Did you want to comment on it? Okay. Any other comments on this topic? Come on. Well, it'll, it'll record it for you. This is going to be on TV, so your neighbors will be able to watch you on TV.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but, and I, I agree with you, sir. I think Miller is a unique case. Maple is a wider avenue. There's space for my kids to be going up and down the street on their scooters or their bikes, and there's still room for traffic. Miller is more of a bottleneck. It's about one and a half lanes wide, almost immediately pond entering. And it gets narrower as you go up. And I have to commend you for those temporary signs on Sunday. I was at the O's game, so I didn't get to hang around for the farmer's market, but seeing that was a real positive thing.
They worked well.
Yeah, that was, the, the bright orange warning sign was a good warning, I would say. In terms of event parking or not parking versus all-year parking, I think a good solution would be having a resident decal, something like that, or an additional ones that homeowners could have for visitors, for our street. It's really on Miller that's, it's the most terrible. And I would say a close second is on College during those events. And people are willy-nilly parking on both sides, and that's all private property on both sides. It's all private property, and there's a lot of erosion now because of that.
College itself could go no parking all the time, since there is no residential driveways, except at the end for Montessori and the property up on the hill.
So those are my two cents.
Thank you.
Your two cents.
As far as I'm concerned, the, first of all, I wanted to thank the mayor and council for what they did to preclude parking on the street. The means that were used were very effective. First time out, there were no problems, which was a great thing. Permanent parking signs, I don't know if that's going to work for the reasons that were stated by the gentleman in the back. There was the mention of these signs that the police had put out that we could have them on the street ourselves and plant them as necessary. Do you remember that? That's one solution. The other solution is what Patrick mentioned, to have some type of designation for our vehicles so that we could have parking on, on the street. Because sometimes we do have people who are there for repair purposes. Say, a plumber or a builder is at one of the houses and can't fit in the driveway, they do park on the street. So for that reason, we wouldn't want to have a permanent sign up there. But if there were a permanent sign up, it would almost have to say, no parking during events, which that's open to interpretation. Everybody has to decide, okay, what kind of event is this? But, but I, I agree with, with what Patrick had mentioned about the, about the designation for our, our family and visitors. But also, I think it's a, a tolerable idea to use the signs. And I would volunteer to keep them in my garage and spread them out. Now, I know people may, they don't, they don't want them. But, you know, if we had, how many do you normally put on, on Miller, I guess, six?
I think I put a dozen on College, Maple, and Tobe.
Okay, well, say if you put six on our street, I'll keep them in the garage. And we can put them afterward as special events. And that's all I have. So we actually resolved nothing.
It's not my, it's a lot of good ideas.
My recommendation, the town council, I'll decide.
Well, I just wanted to bring, bring up something. Hi. Hi. My name's Lorraine. I live on Miller. Nice to meet you, nice folks here. And my property was the only one that did get the sign. So they were coming up and thinking that they could park right on my lawn, and that was for both events. So I was not happy.
I heard.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. Chief, how do you feel about being able to have guys monitor those streets during, like, say, the Art and Wine Festival? Going through and seeing who's got decals or not?
It's going to be very difficult. I mean, I don't know if we've ever done that before with any type of, it doesn't mean we can't do it. I certainly agree with some of the comments that were made, particularly about Miller. We did take some measurements of all three roads, as I believe Mr. Johnston, has he?
Definitely.
Had done, and Miller was by far the, the most narrow, anywhere between 16 and 18 feet. And the national standard for emergency access is 20 foot. So that road already is, is more narrow than it should be. And then if you add parking on either side, you're really restricting emergency access on, on that road. So in my own mind, Miller is a no-brainer for, for permanent parking signs. But again, that's for someone else, for you guys to decide. The issue on Maple, just keep in mind, if we put no parking sign, permanent no parking signs on College and Miller, where are people going to go during the events? They're going to go to Maple. They're going to go to.
Oh, yes, they're going to. Maple's too far of the drive. That's why, I mean, too far a walk, so.
Yeah, we found out on the past event that no matter, like, like Peter said, no matter where we didn't have a sign, is where the people parked.
Well, he's still.
Including along Sandusky Road.
I will say, if they're parked in front of my place, and guarantee you they won't park in front. I'm an old-timer. They listen to me when I get out there. And I'll take crap like they, you know, they do nowadays. And, but anyhow, they don't park in front of my place.
It's the sound of that shotgun.
We should, we should be responsible for our own properties.
Sure. We can't ask the residences to be out there during an event all day to just monitor.
Don't ask.
In front of the property.
So which events are the biggest problems, I think? Are the Chili Festival and the Art and Wine Festival, and maybe the Ice Festival? And then, I mean, for, for the massive, where the, all the town is inundated. And then we have the, the farmer's market now on Sundays. With the exception of Mother's Day, where it was just totally congested. Is it possible just to put the temporary signs up on Miller on farmer's market days? And then if it's a, a major event, to then do all three streets? And not do the permanent, or?
Again, we can try that, but my experience has been where you put the signs, people won't park. They'll go to another area, and then it just, we're chasing our tail, going from, from one area to the next for people to find parking. Again, if there should be no parking there during an event, my, my feeling is there should be no parking there permanently. Because the road does not allow the two-way, two-way flow of traffic with parking on, on either side of the road.
Just Miller, you referred to.
All three, in my estimation.
With all respect, again, during non-event days, there's nominal traffic on Miller and Maple. And there's, there is enough room for two vehicles to comfortably pass if need be. Longtime residents of the neighborhood have gotten inhabited, pulling over a little further and letting one car back. The, the parking issue seems to be on event days. And to, again, permanently make that no parking, you're impacting families that want to come and visit, to neighbors that don't have adequate. and visit, to neighbors that don't have adequate parking on their property. You're making, again, it's a matter of making the residents suffer for a couple of days a month of inconvenience. And I don't think that's fair.
Okay. So I think we got lots of information, which is really good tonight, so I think maybe we need to sit and talk about it and figure it out, you know, to see what the best way to do it is, I think. But thank you for getting all the info. I think we got a lot of info now to think about as far as the best way to handle it. I mean, unless anybody else got any other questions, but I think...
So were you guys having trouble this Sunday with the farmer's market? Farmer's market, people parking up there? No, just a big... Just a big, okay.
We had the signs up.
Oh, you had the signs up? Okay.
Yes, but there was not a parking issue on this one.
No, there never is.
On Mother's Day, which was one weekend of the Art and Wine Festival, no signs, cars at the end of people's driveways, people on park willingly without care. If there are no signs, it's gonna be chaos. It's on events, I agree. On those event days, all bets are off. Normally, people don't want to go up that way. They don't realize it's a shortcut to get out to 32.
But there was enough parking down in town last Sunday that they didn't have to come up two-year-old.
Three.
But with Mother's Day and Beck's having a Mother's Day brunch, and Baldwin Station having a Mother's Day brunch.
There were four eateries that all had brunch situations on Mother's Day morning.
Which made it a parking issue. But on Sunday, I frequent the farmer's market, and there was plenty of parking right along Main Street.
Dana and I personally walked around for an hour and a half preceding church and after for 40 minutes, and there was constantly no less than 25 spaces available at any given time throughout all of the available lots in town, including Main Street.
I might add that I think the solution is, the common sense solution is, that on these events, if people work out some way for no parking, for just these events, I think you got the answer. But not for year-round, when we have families and such. I mean, that's the common sense thing, in my mind.
I think the question we're looking at right now is, does it need to be for every farmer's market? Was Mother's Day a unique situation?
Yes, it's the answer to that question, and so it's the rest of it is the events.
Well, again, it depends on the event. Some are larger than others, you know, especially in the fall.
Rachel has a comment.
But the bottom line is, it's mostly a problem on events days. You know, the rest of the year, it's fine.
I don't mean... Yeah. I think we've heard everybody's opinions to this point. Rachel has a new comment, maybe?
As promotions committee chair for the Main Street Association, we are more than happy to work on the solution together. If that involves us working with mayor and town council, our volunteers putting the signs out, I'm often out there myself, doing some no parking signs to help the police staff out. So the Main Street Association is willing to work alongside the residents. We do not want to cause any problems for you, and I've seen during the events, I do feel sorry that there's not much common sense. I apologize for that. But even if, at our expense, having something printed that says local traffic only, that if they're coming and going from that street during that festival day, they could move it, leave, and then put it back, those kind of things. But we would definitely love to cooperate and solve this problem.
Okay. For this upcoming Sunday, do we want to try without signage and see what happens? Or do we want to try with the temporary signs?
I think that going a regular Sunday without the signs to see how it goes. I know that we reacted accordingly to the big Mother's Day Sunday and everything, and having just been followed preceded by the Wine Festival. I think it would be a good idea to get a feel for things without the sign.
When do you have the town festival in the fall?
The two times a year.
The Chili Festival?
I think that's what it is. It's like a fall festival.
Harvest Fest will be October 8th this year.
That could be looked at for parking also. That's a very large event, I believe.
So definitely the festivals, I think that worked well, not having the parking on all three of the streets this year works for the festivals. So I think we're cognizant of that, it's probably the way to go with those. Now, the relocation of the farmer's market too has created some challenges, where I don't think we had any problems in the past when the market was down there. So I know there's some conversations going on location. I don't know if it's gonna stay there. But if it does stay there, then I do think we need to just be cognizant, maybe to try it a few weeks.
Right. I mean, with the farmer's market on Mother's Day this year, this is the first year that it was on Mother's Day, and everybody likes to go out, get flowers for Mother's Day, with all the eateries and the brunches and the church and all going off at the same time, there was, you know, there was no parking.
We had a challenge too, is that the market moved to what had been the parking area.
Correct.
All the spots away, so...
Yeah, and then location's real convenient to Mallard to walk now to that location, whereas before, it's maybe not as convenient.
But for the residents here, do you guys have an issue with trying this upcoming Sunday without any signage and see what it's like?
We can be white lab rats for...
Thank you for that, yeah. Thanks for your patience.
There's three. I mean, we wouldn't... There wouldn't be any designated... I mean, otherwise, we'd return to a temporary fix.
Right.
No temporary works.
We do, except it also means additional workload for the police.
Additional workload for the police. So we're trying to figure out a solution that works well for them as well, so...
So Don's suggesting three in a row, trying three weekends in a row?
At least it'll give us the next meeting.
And not do the College Avenue proposal, which was mentioned earlier. I think that's a great idea, because coming off of 32 up that...
Totally.
It's narrow, too.
You almost always want to run into somebody if you don't get killed. And it's parking on both sides, it's hard.
It's a blind spot there.
I have a problem with that one being permanent.
Agreed.
Yep.
Well, you could make that designation tonight if you want.
Well, there you go. Maybe consider doing that. But I think we should wait and figure this out together. Let's do it as a package. But I think that one's kind of a no-brainer, because there's... But we'll put it together, maybe do it as a comprehensive plan all at once, does that make sense, or? What do you want to do?
It's just wrong pains with successful festivals.
Right.
And the only other public comment I would like to make is, from an events day perspective, I think it would be, and Chief agrees, because we actually spoke about this offline, I would propose that it be advertised for the events, that the only places there is parking are designated parking spaces, lots, most of which are off Main Street, off-town property per se, like off the downtown area, which would, I think, dissuade most people from even trying to come on and park on streets that we're talking about right now. If they believe that the only place parking is available are the lots, the adjunct lots.
I think that's a good idea. We'll find a solution.
And I'd like to thank all of you for coming out and working on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, because your input's really important for us to understand what the challenges are too, the individual challenges, so we can figure out a solution that best fits your needs. Because we don't want to make something that, like you said, where we make it and then realize you're really pissed off because you can't park there with your families and stuff.
Congratulations on your election.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for all your help.
Just realize, we don't need a bill of all.
Right.
Now you got something.
Thanks for coming.
You guys go. Go to the front row.
Yeah. All right. Are there any other items that we want to... Or can we go ahead and approve the consent agenda without that taking item four off? Are there any other items that people would like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, items one, two, and three, with number four having been removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Is any general's approved for not item four, which we'll discuss, I guess, maybe in June, will that be the time, but no, eighteen or thirteen?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to have track to the reports?
Yep. So now we can get back, thank you for the council committee reports, and we'll start down this end.
Yeah. We can start here now. I didn't know we were gonna be an hour and 40 minutes into it.
See, you're ready to go now. All right. So we'll start down on this end, the Historic District Commission.
Thank you for your consideration, Mayor. So as a liaison to the Historic District Commission, the Gate House Museum, and the Colored Schoolhouse, my report will be very brief. We have not met as a Historic District Commission since our last town council meeting, but we are however meeting tomorrow evening here in these chambers at 7:00. The Gate House Museum is up and running and open again every Friday and Sunday, until hours are needed in addition to that, if that's determined or need to be changed, but right now, that's where we're at. And the Colored Schoolhouse, I haven't received their report in quite a while, with no information, but I do know that they're still doing their after-school, and maybe I don't know how long that runs, but they're still doing their after-school tutoring in the evenings. Twice a week still? Yeah. That's it.
Awesome. Perks and Rick?
Perks and Rick, we have not had a meeting since our last mayor and town council meeting. Our meeting that is scheduled for this Thursday, the 26th, has been canceled, and we're trying to work on a date that's gonna be rescheduled. And our next movie is going to be Saturday, June 10th, at Cooper Park, at Sundown, and it's Ferris Bueller's Day Off. So that'll be fun and bring back lots of memories.
Warfield Development Corporation has also not met since our last meeting, and we do have a meeting coming up this week. So we're working on getting some new board members installed, some of which will be talked about later this evening. And then, you know, the appraisal came, they had the property reappraised, there's some things we're working on with the contract negotiations, the Sixth Amendment, and working with the Industrial Development Authority, as well as Carroll County, to get resolution on the extension. So other than that, that's it.
It's a broken record. The planning commission has not met since our last meeting. We... Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 6th, which is outside our normal first Monday meetings, because a couple of us have graduations to attend.
Good deal.
Main Street, we actually did meet. We had promotions committee meeting, discussed the Art and Wine Fest recap, we're looking at next year. It's gonna be unusual, because it's gonna be on May 5th, so it's gonna be a Art and Wine Cinco de Mayo extravaganza. We're not sure how that's gonna work out yet, but we will see. Harvest Fest this year, coming up on October 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. One thing we did talk about, if the farmer's market... It's gonna be a combination of Harvest Fest slash farmer's market. It's not gonna be a exclusive just Harvest Fest, because that's... We're kind of getting away from that. But one thing we did talk about is that if the farmer's market stays where it is now, the parrot lot, that on the day of the Harvest Fest slash farmer's market, we would set up a... The mayor and town council would have a little setup up here on the front porch of the townhouse for meet and greet, if people wanted to have a hot dog giveaway, that sort of thing, just to give people a chance to come out and meet us who normally wouldn't. So that's something that's under consideration. The event formerly known as the Chili and Beer Festival will be held on November 4th. We are struggling for a name and a concept right now. The lead seems to be Beer Fest with food trucks, but we are still struggling for a name like that. Rachel, I have presented your proposal of Beer Fest and street food to several millennials, and they all cringe when they hear that, so I think we're gonna try something else. I was actually looking online a little while ago, the one up in Union Mills, they just call it the Maryland Microbrew Festival.
Street meet and cheer.
Yep. So, but I think it's gonna be... We had to get away from the chili, just because it became so expensive for the chili vendors, and just so overwhelming to where it's... They're out of chili in an hour, and it becomes frustrating for the people who come, so I think that's where we're gonna go with that. Farmer's Market, as everybody knows, has started. Rachel, would you mind coming up to the podium just for a second? I want to acknowledge you. Most people may not know this, but Rachel Beck has been heavily involved in the farmer's market while Julie's been away, getting to the setup, 6:30 in the morning on Sundays, including Mother's Day, setting up at 6:30 in the morning on Mother's Day, getting everything ready, and to the point of even, I just found this out today, to the point of this last farmer's market, cleaning the bathroom at the warehouse building, so that we could have that open to pacify the vendors to use a bathroom there. She took it upon herself to literally clean the bathroom, so that we could have it ready for the vendors. And I really just want to acknowledge everything you've done for the market, for Art and Wine Fest, and for Main Street in general. I really appreciate it.
Girl, asshole, thanks.
And just to piggyback on Leo's report, just to let everybody know that the Little Sex Railroad is up and running. They had their last... Or their first day this past Sunday during the farmer's market. And I guess they're gonna be going at the times of the farmer's market.
Yep.
My son was one of the engineers there, and he said it was a very successful lot of people.
Yeah, it's a great combination with the farmer's market. We have our next promotions committee meeting, June 13th, to continue planning the events. Next board meeting, June 8th.
Can we do a first Friday?
Yes.
Block party is June 2nd?
Yep, we have that in the announcement, but you have the first Friday Block Party, June 2nd, from 6:00 to 9:00. Summer kickoff block party along Main Street.
Cool.
And one quick announcement with the... Just piggyback with the streetscape, is that we did receive from the Department of Transportation, the Maryland 851 and Oklahoma Avenue intersection reconfiguration feasibility study, and that has been distributed to the rest of the... Or to the town council. So I guess we need to look at that and have some discussions at future meetings. And I believe we also have money in the budget for some studies ourselves, so that's good information from the state. So, Don, thank you for following up with them and getting that report.
All right, so that brings us to our next item on the agenda.
Or announcements.
Announcements. First, all the announcements. So first Friday Block Party is June 2nd, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This month has a summer kickoff block party along Main Street. Gate House Presentation is June 8th, 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. The Gate House curator, Jack Wright, will give a presentation at the townhouse on aspects of life in Sykesville 100 years ago. So it'll be pretty exciting. Sykesville Cinema, June 10th, again. The movie will be Ferris Bueller's Day Off. And the farmer's market and Little Sykes Railway are open on Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All right. And then our last item is the Sustainable Communities Designation Renewal. So the Sustainable Communities Act of 2010 established a framework for reinvestment and revitalization of Maryland's existing communities, creating a single locally designated geographic focus area called the Sustainable Communities, and is intended to provide an efficient means of targeting scarce public and private resources for multiple state agency investments and prioritizations. The application requires the town to assess and set goals for the following areas: environment, economy, transportation, housing, quality of life, and land use, and local planning. So we were interested in seeing about getting some input from any of the groups in the community to create a unified community vision. The designation is required to apply for and receive certain state funds, such as community legacy funding, and we need to renew the designation every five years, and our current designation expires on July 25th, 2017. So this application provides an opportunity for local governments to update their existing Sustainable Communities action plan and report on the accomplishments made over the past five years. So through the renewal process, local governments can request additional technical assistance and highlight any areas from the original action plan for which progress must still be made. So Don's gonna provide an overview of where we are, and request any input from other groups in renewing the designation, and request at least one council member to volunteer to be involved. So an early draft is attached, so if everybody's had a chance to take a look at that. And you wanna... Is that where we are?
Yeah, well, so that update is pretty... Gives an overview. The July 25th deadline is what is the most critical. That's why we wanted to talk about it in May, because the next council member will be doing the meeting, we just have two council meetings before now, and when the application renewal is due. We did have a couple of interns from the state who helped to take information from a visit and put it into the format for us, but it's a very rough draft format. It's by not any means a final document. us, but it's a very rough draft format. It's by not any means a final document. There's some things that need to be reviewed. But this process can be anything from as simple as complete the form and send it in at very administrative level, or it could be a intense community involvement process, or things in between. Some involvement, maybe not intense involvement, but it's an opportunity to set goals as a community, and it sets the direction for the future. And it's also a good opportunity. So we had things where grants come up and we're like, oh, that sounds like a great grant. We should apply for that. But then we're kind of, it's a very quick turnaround. And the idea here is to have, these are the projects, these are the goals, we've all agreed upon. So when grants come along, we go to this list and we are, we all are aware of, these are the things that we want to focus our efforts and get resources to do. So I just wanted to check in and see how you all wanted to proceed. I think there are other groups that could be involved or consulted with. And our hope is that once we get the circuit rider on board, that that person can help with this. But again, we don't have a lot of time.
Okay. Your thoughts?
Did we get any benefits of being a community the last five years?
Yeah, every community legacy grant that we've received, so for facade improvements, lighting improvements, we got because we had this designation, or we couldn't get if we didn't have this designation.
Okay.
I think also the money to purchase 7610 Main Street, we also needed this designation to do, so.
Right. So, I mean, I think it's been working what we've had. I'm not sure we want to get too far into the detail because then maybe you limit it. Now, the scope, it is maybe a good idea to, as Dawn stated, maybe have some direction of what grants we're particularly interested in, because you end up.
It's really more projects. So the Sustainable Communities, we also have to say, here's what we've accomplished, which is quite a list of what, if you look at the draft, there's a lot of things that have happened. And then also, you've set outcomes for the next five years. So we, we have to do something. We can't just keep it exactly the same.
Right.
But then we use that list for, with what are the goals, to evaluate grant opportunities against those goals.
Right. So, but I think we can look at our goals from, the ideas from the last one and look and see, that's what I'm saying, maybe along those same lines and then see what projects fit into those.
Yeah, so that's in the draft. I think that's what the, that's laid out as a starting point for conversation.
Right.
But there might not, there might be more things that come up. I don't want to pigeon, pigeonhole ourselves in saying, these were the only projects. So something comes up, like purchasing the Parrot Lot, well, that's not part of our goal, so we're not going to do that. I want to have some type of ability that it be fluid, and if some opportunity comes up, that we take advantage of that. Yeah, I don't think this is meant to tie our hands. I mean, and their goals are very broad too. So you would hope that they would allow for several different opportunities.
Okay.
I think evaluating some of the grants on the basis that they come up sometimes might be a little more helpful, because a lot of times people do say, oh, look, a grant, we can get some money. But then, then we try to fit it somewhere rather than having the need for it ahead of time, if that makes sense. You know, I'd rather have the ideas targeted to where we can use the money. And then when it becomes available, we apply it rather than trying just to figure out where to stick it. Because then it becomes a whole bunch of last minute work trying to figure out where to, and I think that's what you're trying to avoid from staff perspective.
Right. But it's also an opportunity, for example, to talk with the Main Street Association and talk about downtown goals. So we're all talking about the same goals and working towards the same goals.
When's the deadline? It's already told me to go.
It's right there.
Yes, we need to have something before that timeframe to, if we wish, to make some changes.
Can we use the blueprint of the application that we had five years ago and just kind of change it to fit what we have this year? Or does it have to completely be different?
The blueprint can be used, and that's what the, so the draft, we have a draft, so that's the good news. We're not, we've got it probably 70% of a draft, maybe more. It's really more just a vetting. Does this, is this a reality check? Is this what people support?
Okay.
Or are there things that aren't on that list that we've been talking about that should be on the list?
I guess from the Main Street, Main Street perspective, I can take the draft and the documents to, we've got a board meeting coming up in eight and a half or so, and I can add that to our agenda. But it's just anything. Add, delete.
Sounds like a good idea. Maybe get some input in that direction. It'd be nice to be able to, from the Main Street perspective, to narrow down like some of the scope so we can apply, because it does seem like a lot of the grants come up where we, it'd be nice to have a targeted focus.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that.
Okay.
Well, I don't know how active the Green Committee is with the rest of the Main Street Association, but I would get them.
I'll make sure it gets all the committees with their input.
Just keep in mind, it's also a draft, so this, whatever's being circulated isn't like a hard and fast proposal in and of itself. It's just ideas.
Okay. Then I guess any other thoughts that come up between now and then? We can talk about this at the next meeting as far as how to proceed, right? Because that'll have to happen then, pretty much?
Right, but the other idea was to see if there was a council member who would volunteer to help.
Oh.
Be a liaison.
I need something to do that.
And that might be something to, as you're talking about liaisons in the next week or so, think about everybody's workload, but.
Right.
So I guess.
We're going to talk about that, yeah, next week, I think, so.
Could consider this.
Be part of that conversation now.
Thanks, buddy.
And then, once this submission is over, then that aspect of the liaisons would be over.
Well, that's an interesting question. So for, it gets submitted, it has to be approved. So there might be some back and forth. But then the question is some, there's, originally was a work group proposed that meets periodically to say, hey, how are we doing? So that would be another question, if there would be a work group that meets periodically.
Didn't Lindsey take that, didn't Lindsey take that as in the Green Committee? Wasn't that part of the, when it originally started? Or no? Lindsey with the Green Committee or?
I don't think so.
I think it was before that, but there's some things that might have tied in.
I mean, I think it's something definitely, I mean, based on reading this report, it needs to be maintained throughout the year so that we're not at this point trying to madly put this together. So I think it would be good to have someone responsible for tracking this information and meeting with whoever they need to meet to do it.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea is identifying early on where all the grant opportunities exist, right? But so, and then see where they may plug into the plan as you're going through the year. Because what seems to be happening is, all the time is the grants come up the last minute, and we're trying to rush to get them through. Whereas if we can identify them, and I think DHDI now has like a clearinghouse, don't they, where you can see where all the grants are that potentially make fit, right? So doing that with community legacy and all that kind of stuff, finding out where they are, and then matching them up to what we have, and then we can prepare ahead of time. So it's not, that's what I was thinking.
Shuffle.
And then maybe that's where having a group of people that are kind of putting this together yearly are saying, hey, this is coming up. We could apply this grant here. Let's apply. That's just a little more thought out effort. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe it does make sense to have a group of people that can be monitoring this and following through. And then maybe somebody with Main Street as well, having Main Street involved.
Well, I could have a representative on the group, for example.
Yeah. So maybe we'll try to put together a framework for that over the next week or so, to, in my word. Okay. All right. So I think that's all the enders for this evening.
I do have one other, I just noticed this from briefing Friday, the Sugar Shuffle.
Oh, right.
That's right.
Thank you. I forgot.
Thank you.
Good catch, man.
I'm just, I'm just having.
Yeah, so the folks from the Sugar Shuffle, I don't think there's anybody here with the Sugar Shuffle.
They shuffled off.
Actually, she had an accident, her daughter was hurt, and they ended up having to go to urgent care. So, yeah, so they would like approval for the Sugar Shuffle in February of 2018. And it's on the Baldwin's parking lot. So I think the request, they just want to know if they can go ahead and start advertising.
And the plan is for it to be pretty much identical or incredibly similar to this past one, this past February, I think it was. So I. I think it was a great event, and I think it went really well. I don't know of any, I think even the, you know, the reports that were received afterwards, the briefing we did after that was all good feedback. I don't have any issues.
When, what day was it again?
February, hold on. February 18th. It's a Sunday. Oh, but she's got 2017, and you said it should be 18th, yeah. So, yeah, Sunday's February 18th.
And then when is the Ice Festival typically?
It's usually the first Sunday in, it's closest to my birthday in the Super Bowl, so it'd be like a week or two before that.
Okay.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday. But it wouldn't be that weekend.
Great. Okay. I don't see any issue for it. So, yeah, they wanted to get that approved tonight, if it's okay, right, so they can start advertising for Memorial Day?
Yeah, the idea's the use of the location, and then we'll, closer, I mean, this is way far out. Closer to the event, then we'll need to talk with them about the details.
Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the application, Sykesville Sugar Shuffle for Sunday, May 18, 2018.
Not Sunday, May.
With the, I'm sorry?
Not May, February.
I'm sorry. Sunday, February 18, 2018, with the assumption that they would work with the town administration as the event approaches.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah, for catching that. Yep, that's awesome, because we almost forgot that. Anything else? Other business?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
We're voting.
We gotta read something real quick. We may be voting on some WDC appointments, I guess, perhaps?
I'll read it for you.
Yeah, awesome.
The meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B, 1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matters that affects one or more specific individuals and seven to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Consult with legal counsel regarding Warfield contract negotiations, personnel matter, Warfield Development Corporation board appointments, confidential personal information. Consult with legal counsel regarding the Main Street organization and personnel, public work, staffing, confidential personal information. Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I think a five-minute recess. Thank you.